Everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Today is July 25th, 2017. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members.
Mr. Franti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire. Absent. Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Orego.
Here. The first item on our agenda will be the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have just a few updates for the committee and for families at home. We wanted to focus tonight's superintendent's report on activities and projects that are ongoing over the summer. So the first project I want to talk about is an update on the Garfield Middle School roof project. I'm pleased to let everybody know that that project is moving along as anticipated. We are currently doing work on all different areas of the roof. As I shared with the committee this morning, there are a couple of pieces that we're taking a closer look at. One is the playground structure on the third floor, early childhood playground. Another one is the pieces where we are having some work with NSTAR that's going to do some movement of wires so that we can complete certain areas of the roof safely, but NSTAR is working with us closely and with the mayor's office to make sure that can happen. We do anticipate that the project will continue on into the fall after the start of the school year, but it will not be intrusive to the school. It'll be some last bits and pieces that they're working on. It will not impede the opening of school. It will not impede student progress or teacher progress in any way, but there could be some pieces such as that third floor playground that I'm talking about that may not be open as soon as school opens at the end of August. So that's the update on the Garfield roof. The second update I wanted to give is on the Garfield boiler replacement project, which the committee knows and as the mayor and the city council know because they voted to fund that project through the Mass School Building Authority. We put in for an accelerated repair to also take care of the Garfield boilers and replace the two existing boilers over the course of this summer. In working with the MSBA, we have determined that it is in the best interest of the city to postpone that project until next summer, and that's because of some procurement issues where bids on the projects significantly exceeded the budgeted amount and the amount allowed by the MSBA. So we have taken the MSBA's advice. They have given us permission to delay that project by one year, and we anticipate our owner's project manager going to putting that project back out to bid either in the late summer or the early fall where we anticipate we'll have some more favorable bids. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on either of those projects. The next two pieces, the next two items under the superintendent's report, we wanted to just share with the community and share with the committee the projects that are going on for teachers and staff over the summer and also the programs that are going on for students over the summer. You know, a lot of people think that the schools shut down on the last day and everybody takes a grand vacation for 10 weeks or so, but the truth of the matter is many of our teachers and adminis-- all of our, many of our administrators, all of our principals continue to work full-time throughout the summer. And so we wanted to make sure that the public was aware of the different programs, but also can understand the incredible dedication of our teachers and our administrations. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Mokaba, who's going to share a little bit more information about those summer programs.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. We have a lot going on here in the summer for our educators. So first, some of the required professional development that we contractually have all of our teachers finish before the end of their third-year teaching. We have the Studying Skillful Teaching I course for our teachers that are in years one and year two and year three. We also, we offer this annually. We also have, for the first time in a few years, the alternative to Studying Skillful Teaching I for our SISPs, our occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists, school adjustment counselors are able to take a course more tailored to their needs as educators that provide services outside of the traditional classroom. We have a lot going on as part of our work with the five district partnership. We recently began our Coaching for Sustainable School Improvement professional development that's offered through Research for Better Teaching. Our district literacy and math coaches will be joining the coaches from the other districts in the five DP to look at how to work with our teachers for, to support sustainable school improvement. In addition, we have a collaboration with Teach Plus where teachers would have the opportunity to take five free teacher-led professional development workshops that were offered at Revere High School. They were Finding a Balance with Literacy, How to Engage Students with Informational Text, Teaching All Students a Multicentry Approach, Procedural Versus Conceptual, Is There a Place for Both in Our Math Classrooms, Thinking Moves, and Math Tasks Worth Solving. We know we had several educators working, taking these courses that were offered here at Revere High School. And finally, our work with the five DP, we offered an assessment writing for science where our teachers are working with their like, job-alike peers to create benchmark assessments for grades five and grades eight in science. We also had additional PD offered that goes along with our emphasis supporting the social emotional learning in the classroom. So we have an administrative training coming up prior to the start of the school year looking at supporting social emotional learning in our classrooms. We also have a social emotional learning in the classroom training that we are engaging with Rivas and Associates, and this, we're taking the Train the Trainer model where our teachers are going to learn, they're taking an intensive training to be able to disseminate and train the remaining staff in the district, and this is something that we are really looking forward to in our effort to support the whole child. The next thing that I'm going to talk about is our summer school offerings. We have several summer school programs running this year. We have two transition programs running, one for students that are entering grade six and one for students who are entering grade nine. These research-based programs are designed to facilitate what we know is a difficult transition time for students as they leave their elementary school and take that jump into middle school and as they leave their middle school and transition into high school. All three of our middle schools have programs this year. The Garfield Middle School program took place at Rumney Marsh Academy due to the work that's happening on the Garfield roof. All of our elementary schools are finishing up or have completed their summer programs. We had ELL programs running throughout the district, including a large ELL program here at Revere High School. We also have credit recovery programs running both at Revere High School and at Seacoast High School. And finally, our special education program is up and running at the Beauchmond School due to construction at the Garfields. They are finishing up with their program and their afternoon enrichment activities on August 3rd. And finally, Alphabet was running our after-school summer program at the Paul Revere School. I apologize. And finally, as far as summer food services, we, over 20 locations in the city are serving food to our youth. Our most popular parks and the following schools, the Beauchmond School, Paul Revere School, Hill, Rumney, Lincoln, Susan B., the Susan B. Whalen Complex, and Revere High School are all sites where students and their siblings are able to get, take advantage of the summer food service program.
Thank you, Dr. Mokaba. Any questions from the committee?
Mr. Sinella?
Dr. Mokaba, on the lunch program itself, any numbers as to participation?
I wasn't able to get that for the meeting, but I'm sure I can get that from Pauline Lyons, who oversees the summer food service program.
Because you go by some parks and there's a goodly number and others, I'm just curious whether everyone realizes of sites, but I think I was informed that at the end of the school year, notices were sent home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Danielle, you mentioned that there were teachers taking the social and emotional training. How many of our teachers are actually taking it and, you know, that'll be teaching the other staff?
So there were at least two that were invited to participate from each school. Dr. Vidala had arranged this through a grant opportunity that he had. There's a school adjustment counselor, guidance counselor, so they were targeting a SISP in addition, trying to look for teachers that were willing to do this, and their primary role is going to be to serve as trainers for the rest of the district, and one thing they are going to be doing is running a training on our very first day, the PD day we have on our first day back.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Any other members?
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Sinella.
I threw you to the superintendent before she wraps it up. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I was kind of blindsided by a reporter from the Revere Journal regarding conditions at the Hill School. Since that time, I'm sure you've seen the article. Can you kind of give some input exactly what it is? I guess the heating system, the air conditioning, I mean, it just sounded like it was falling apart, but I'm not privy to any information. It seems like no one else was, so if you'd kindly give us an update as to what specifically he was speaking about, maybe that could help out.
Sure, and I apologize for that. I think that we should have been a little bit more deliberative in our communications about where we are in the current status at the Hill School. I think it felt a little bit to myself and the mayor because we've been having so many conversations with MSBA. It felt like we were articul-- communicating this information, but we clearly were not doing a good enough job, so my apologies on that. But we did, I was contacted by Seth from the Revere Journal and asked about what was going on because he had heard, I'm not sure from where, that there were some problems with the building. And, you know, we continue to work with the contractor who built the Hill School to try to iron out some issues that have been present at the school since the day the doors opened. And the biggest challenge that we've had and that we're continuing to work with them on is the HVAC system. We feel at this point, because we've had a very successful cooling season since the spring, that the AC portion is now taken care of and well-functioning. We have not had any problems with that AC throughout the summer, but we did last year continue to have problems through the winter with the heating system. And in particular, there are a variety of different problems we keep running into with the boiler system. So our owner's project manager right now is working with the contractor to develop an extended warranty that would promise that they would take care of any issues for a specific length of time. And they are working together with the city solicitor and the MSBA to determine the exact specifications that should be in that agreement. And they are, you know, working through the legal departments, both for the contractor and the city's legal department, to make sure that that's a sound document that we can hold by. And we do feel at this point that the contractor is working with us to try to eradicate these issues. I think that for a long time when the building was under development, and I know that Dr. Dakin and Mr. McGuire and the other people on the building committee had identified some issues and had looked to be addressed, I think they felt at that time that their concerns fell on deaf ears, but it seems to me at this time, issues are being addressed. And, you know, they're the kind of issues, I don't want to say that they're not serious because the citizens of Revere and the political leaders of Revere and this body included have invested a lot of time and money into the creation of this new building. The issues have not prevented us from having school on any day. So that is, you know, a bit of peace of mind that, knowing that things are not so severe that they're preventing us from having school or impacting the learning environment that us students and teachers are working in in any way, but still, you know, with the kind of investment that was made, we deserve a state-of-the-art, top-of-the, top-of-class, best job possible, and that's what we're working to ensure that we get. And I guess that's about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Franti?
Dr. Kelly, the other day, I drove by, we had that torrential downpour. When it came down like in five minutes, we got all the water, and Park Ave was totally flooded, and I know that has nothing to do with the school, and I know we have an issue there. And I think that something really has to be done because the water was over the sidewalks. And, you know, you driving towards like Mount Rushmore, but that's just, just something else. This school's been going on for three years, the problems, and the last time we had a building meeting, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and it seems like nothing's really getting done. Working with a guy that can't fix a problem in three years is a problem, and I don't know why that we're so hesitant to just say, "Look, move on and we'll fix it." It's not fair and it's not right, and I don't think the city's accepted the school yet, right?
We haven't, so the city has not accepted the school.
So, I mean, at that point, I mean, this thing could go on forever. I mean, I don't, in the trades, but, I mean, it seems like if you have certain problems, you should be able to identify them and fix them, and the lack of their willingness to fix the problems is just not fair to the school department, the taxpayers, or anybody else.
So, and I'll say, on the flooding issue, this is something that we've been trying to work on, and obviously, our water and sewer system has needed a lot of work, and we've continued to do that work. The city engineer, I had a meeting with them last week, and we talked about Park Ave, the impact that is being had not only on, you could say Park Ave, but Broadway up East Mountain Ave where there's other issues, up to the high school. There's approximately 2,000 feet of pipe that may need to be kind of reworked, and so it's a, that's a significant project, but it's one that we may be able to mitigate slowly, but as you, as you do some work downstream, it creates other problems elsewhere. So we're trying to make sure that we fix, we kind of address whatever is getting done. And I'll say, on top of that, the site of the high school, because it's actually, we can kind of identify some issues with the water and sewer system that look like they go back to the, to the building of the, of the high school. So, and at the corner of School Street and East Mountain Ave and that area, there were some missed connections and we've, I've started to identify those issues and we're looking at them, and we're looking at kind of a long-term fix rather than, you know, some short-term things that end up disrupting the rest of the system. So that's one issue. The second, on the, on the building, what I will say is that I think, given the city's and Dr. Kelly's hard line with the contractors and in terms of not accepting the building and being very, we've been, we've beat them up a lot privately, that has turned, I think, a little bit of the corner with their willingness to work, and we've, we've seen it in terms of, you know, going through a cooling period, you know, seeing if the AC can maintain itself and work, which has happened so far this year, knock on wood. But, and going through a heating cycle to see if the, if the heat will continue to work. So we've been, we've been working pretty hard on them, and I think we've, we've taken, we've taken a measured approach in terms of making sure that they know that we're not happy with what's been happening, but also knowing that we do have a building that we can have school in, and it's not, you know, whether or not it is, you know, fundamentally flawed versus an issue, you know, a couple of issues that can theoretically get fixed pretty easily, but maybe take a little bit more time. We've been, we've been very hard and we've tried to make it so, and make them, make them correct any of the problems that we have. The other part of this that I think plays into it is that we both inherited the building, so it was one where we, unlike hopefully a new high school, we have not been on the same page in terms of, from the beginning to the end of the project, and I think there were a lot of things that were done at the beginning of the project that probably should have been changed or should have been done differently, and we end up at this kind of point where we've got a building that we need some fixes to, and we're trying to make sure that we hold the contractors accountable for those fixes, so.
And I would just add, you know, the building committee that worked on the Hill School has been absolutely tremendous too. Paul Dakin, Dan McGuire, Steve Riordan, all of them have been, every time, they've been at that table and they've been the ones who, they initially were getting all of the reports from the contractor on what was going on, and they were the ones who initially were pushing the contractor to make sure things were being fixed and punch lists were getting done, and they've done an incredible job on it. I just think that unfortunately, we had a contractor who wasn't necessarily the best, maybe, I don't know. Yeah.
Same idea, but the police say it, right?
Right. Which we have, we've had additional issues with, and we've tried to continue to hold them accountable.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Sinella?
Alluding to what the general consensus at the beginning, halfway through was the punch list, which Michael referred to, monies were being withheld. That $400,000 kept dwindling, dwindling. Is, are there any monies that are still left on the plate? And, I mean, there were small things like concrete work in the back near the dumpster and all. Has that at least been done also?
So there is still about $250,000 that the city has, has not expended in bills to the contractor, and again, the city solicitor is working with the owner's project manager to talk about how exactly to remedy that with the contractor. But a lot of these things are likely to go, you know, steps further.
Mr. Chairman, thank you both for at least bringing to light, the mechanism is in place, it's just a question of grinding it out, but again, to have found out through a third party was a little embarrassing, and I think this is hopefully clarifying to the public and, you know, parents and everything else, and it's, unfortunately, the Whalen School complex, the builder went bankrupt, so we don't have that here. You are negotiating with people and hopefully it'll get done. Thank you.
And I think at the end of the day, we want to make sure that other school districts don't have to go through similar issues, you know, and, and, you know, it's not, as Dr. Kelly alluded to, we invested a significant amount of money in that building. We want to make sure that that building is working and working for a very long time. You know, we don't run into problems that we've, we've seen, you know, in being shortsighted and not having a facility that, that we deserve.
Mr. Mayor. Theo?
Ms. Ty?
Well, I think part of, part of the problem is that we have to pick the lowest bidder. And I know it's supposed to be the lowest responsible bidder, but when we have to pick the lowest bidder, I mean, sometimes we get lucky. The Paul Revere School, certainly we did. Our only problems there are, it's not, it's not big enough, but, you know, when you, when you have to take someone because you have to take them, it's not the most desirable thing. So I hope when we start the new high school, that we make sure it's the lowest responsible bidder and not just the lowest bidder. Thank you.
Great, great input. Thank you, Ms. Ty. Next item on our agenda is the student representative report, which we have none. Public participation, seeing nobody, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar.
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
Say.
Roll call?
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes. Next item is the report of subcommittees. We have the superintendent's evaluation. Mrs. Rizzo?
Thank you, Mayor Orego. I was going to put this on PowerPoint, but after looking at all my mistakes and spelling, I am so happy I didn't do that. So in compliance with the Massachusetts Educator Appraisal System, each school committee member must conduct annually a public review of the performance of the school district's superintendent of schools. The school committee must produce an evaluation report and then work with the superintendent to define or refine the superintendent's annual performance plan and goals for the next school year. Today, we are reporting the end-of-cycle evaluation for Dr. Diane Kelly. The evaluation process includes two parts. Part one is comprised of assessing Dr. Kelly's progress towards achieving each of her three goals. Previously, the school committee approved her goals, one each in the areas of professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. Progress toward each goal is rated one of the following: exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress, or did not meet. We feel Dr. Kelly has met her professional practice goal of building community. This is being done by creating venues to showcase the work of the district and also expanding the mentor program. Parents who have participated in the lecture series have truly appreciated them and also look forward to future ones. There has also been significant work done to replace our current website, which will enable not only our families but the community to learn about the wonderful work going on in our district, have policy and procedures at their fingertips, or even search for employment in the Revere Public Schools. With the work of Dr. Kelly and the ELL department, they have been able to increase the number of progress reports for our English learning students. The increase of professional development for growth mindset and social emotional learning have been beneficial to all our students. We are pleased to say that she has met this goal. In regard to her district improvement goal, Dr. Kelly leads Revere Public Schools with knowledge and authority. Although student achievement is always at the forefront of a superintendent's goal, Dr. Kelly has also put a great concentration on community building and on assessments of and for all students. The superintendent has built a learning environment in the Revere Public Schools that sets high expectations for the whole, but at the same time tailored to individual students and their needs. Professional development and training with company-based learning, making student learning visible, and project-based learning will assist our students' individual needs. In, excuse me, in an urban school district such as ours, there are different challenges in meeting those goals, but with the significant progress over the past two years, the superintendent has met this goal. Part two, for this part of the evaluation, the school committee assesses Dr. Kelly's performance on each of four standards identified for effective practice by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Each standard is rated one of the following: unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Standard one is instructional leadership, and Dr. Kelly leads Revere Public Schools with knowledge and authority. The superintendent has built a learning environment in the Revere Public Schools that sets high expectations for the whole, but is at the same time tailored to individual students and their needs. We find Dr. Kelly proficient with this standard. We find Dr. Kelly proficient in standard two of management and operations. Dr. Kelly has worked tirelessly during this difficult budget year, working with our local politicians, other superintendents, and Desi to make up the budget shortfall. She understands how surrounding herself with competent staff helps to achieve success for all students, and we are proud of her for that. Standard three, we're proud of her for everything, but I'm just ad libbing. Standard three is family and community engagement. Dr. Kelly continues to promote family and community engagement. She has added opportunities for parents, parents to... She has added opportunities for parents, parents to engage in their children's school experience. She is available to all stakeholders. She is responsive and will engage in meaningful discussion to support the mission of the Revere Public Schools. Dr. Kelly's efforts in the area of family and community engagement warrants a proficient rating on this standard. Standard four is professional culture. And in this standard, we feel Dr. Kelly's work is proficient. She has very effective communication skills. Dr. Kelly has high standards and believes in her staff and fosters teamwork and excellence. She recognizes the diverse background of our community and has organized the cultural competency training for teachers and administrators. In summary, the Revere School Committee is pleased to work with Dr. Kelly. She has met her goals and collectively, we have given her a rating of proficient. And we look forward to seeing how she wants to take them to the next level.
So at this point, I will ask for a motion to accept the evaluation of Dr. Kelly.
Show mover. Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti.
Yes.
Ms. McGravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Thai.
Yes.
Mayor Orego.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm probably the only one here, well, maybe Dr. McCavo, who knows how difficult the job is. So I'd like to say a brief statement about Dr. Kelly. Dr. Kelly is an extraordinary leader. Her accomplishments, her accomplishments in the Revere Public Schools, both those particular to Revere and those who are shared by the five district partnership, serve as a model of practice regionally and statewide. She is an accomplished teacher, scholar, administrator, and communicator, and as such, frequently speaks in a variety of forums to advocate for practices that have been successful in Revere. Dr. Kelly was a major player in the campaign to deny an increase in the number of charter schools. More particular to the Revere Public Schools, she led the five district partnership's successful campaign in the legislature to address the issue of the lost poor in our communities. Her arguments addressed both the actual financial issues buttressed by statistics and comparisons and the moral issue of service to our neediest population. Dr. Kelly has collaborated with all segments of our school community to develop a core values statement. The grading committee is in the process of revising our grading system so that in our student-centered classroom, students will be graded as individuals with emphasis on what they know rather than what they do not know. Professional development will support teachers in their mastery of this forward-thinking initiative. With the framework of the five district partnership, we have developed our own benchmarks and we have our own assessments in grades two through eight. Dr. Kelly has worked collaboratively with our unions to address possible conflicts and to seek solutions that are livable to both sides. She also managed the Garfield Roof Project with all its snags, ongoing, and reinvented our after-school and Title I programs. She has increased the number of forums to showcase student work and has increased student participation in both the governance of their schools and in their own education. I believe that Dr. Kelly is an exemplary superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thai. Any other members?
Anyone want to read their comments too? I have a copy. I thought this was to combine everyone's.
So I think the school committee woman, Thai, did a great job of wrapping up some of the, some of our thoughts about Dr. Kelly. But I will say that it has been a pleasure over the last year and a half to, to work with Dr. Kelly. As somebody who did not have the honor of, of, of serving on the school committee, unlike some of my predecessors, I came in with the only real knowledge of the school system being what I had gone through during my, my time at Paul Revere School and the Beechmont School and the Revere High School. So it has been, it has been a pleasure to work with Dr. Kelly. She is certainly, I think, I've seen a level of dedication that is, is very hard to, to keep up with and, and is something that really shows in the progress and, and all the great things that are happening in our school district. And the fact that I hadn't had to work so hard on the legislature and be in the Speaker DeLeo's office very often because Diane was there to, to represent us, really said a lot about her dedication, not only to, to the issues that impacted our district, but what ended up being a regional issue and was an issue for certain types of communities. And we were lucky to have Dr. Kelly be the person who was at the forefront of, of that issue and couldn't, couldn't think of a better person to represent us and represent those communities. And I know I've got feedback from each one of those communities that was very positive about their, not only their interactions with, with Dr. Kelly, but the fact that the results that we all got were pretty positive. So we are certainly lucky to, to have Dr. Kelly and we, I look forward to continuing a positive relationship with, with you. Thank you.
Just briefly, I want to thank the committee. I know it's a difficult task to write an evaluation of somebody else, especially somebody that you work with closely. I know that firsthand in the evaluations I write for, the colleagues of mine in the school department. But just two things that I want to say briefly. One is the reason the school department is successful is because of the incredible employees that work here. And that's everybody from the teachers to the cafeteria workers, to the administrators, to the custodians. You would be hard-pressed to find a person working in the school department who wasn't dedicated and didn't have the best interest of the kids at heart. And so as you evaluate me, I want to highlight the good light that they shine on me because I get a lot of credit for some of the work that a lot of other people do. And I know, I know that it's leadership that enables people to do things and all of that, but we really do have an incredible staff. And the second thing I want to call out is this school committee and the city at large. Because if it wasn't for all of you here on the committee, and if it wasn't for the incredible parents and other people, the community members in general, the businesses, local businesses and others who partner with the schools, if it wasn't for everybody believing in us, then we wouldn't be able to have the confidence and the hope that we could be the district that we are today. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that I'm one piece of a very large system that really, it's all of us collectively that, that brings success. So thank you. And I appreciate the feedback. I will, of course, use it to drive my work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Next item on our agenda is old business, which there is none, and new business, which there is none. School committee interests. Any members? No. Motions.
No motions.
No motions. With that, I want to make one remark and, and I, I think Ms. Thai will make a couple remarks, but this is the first school committee meeting that we will have without a pillar of our community. Former mayor and former council president Bob Haas, he has been, he was a friend of mine, somebody that I looked up to, somebody that I admired as a young child when he was in the mayor's office. And I was, you know, kicking around City Hall with my dad when he was the city councillor. And he's somebody that I, you know, grew to, to know on, on a much deeper level. And you know, the city has certainly not been the same since his passing. And I know that we all feel a level of loss, but it pales in comparison to the loss that his family is going through and will continue to go through. But Bob was a great man, a great leader in our community. And as Ms. Thai will remind everyone, really kick-started and signed off on, literally signed off on the city's plan to rebuild schools, which is, as Ms. Thai has said a number of times, is a legacy that any, any mayor would certainly be proud of and any, any pillar of the community would be proud of. With that, I'd like to ask Ms. Thai if she has any words that she'd like to say. And, and then I'd ask the committee to take, or if anyone else would like to say anything, obviously entertain that, but would like to end our meeting with a moment of silence for, for former mayor Haas. Ms. Thai.
Well, when I was in high school, I was young Bobby Haas's babysitter. So there are four or five generations of our families that have interacted. He certainly was a child of Beechmont, never forgot that he came from there, no matter where he lived. But he was the kind of guy who was the mayor for the entire city. So I'm three terms as mayor, seven terms as the city councillor at large. And he grew up in a family that had a history of service. His father, Bob Haas Senior, and four brothers, all went off to World War II, left school. And that was one of his father's greatest regrets, that he did not graduate from high school. So when Bobby, not only Bobby and Juanita both graduated from Revere High School in 1963, and then Bobby went on to earn two degrees from Northeastern University, I can remember Bob Senior saying how proud he was of that. And he wished that all of his children, and they have all been successful. He sat at his service, he was in every community organization you could think of, the J.C.'s, the Chamber of Commerce, the American Legion. He was a veteran, of course. He went on to all of them and certainly St. Anthony's Holy Name, where he was very, very active, moose, elk, everything, anytime anybody needed everything. One of the phrases that was said over and over again at the wake was, "Bobby always showed up." And I felt that when people were saying, there are people out there and standing in line for two hours in the hot sun, and some of them are walkers and they have canes and gee, I never saw them before. And I thought that was even more of a testimony to, to how much he had his, he had the pulse of the city. Because he knew all of them and they knew him. And they were coming there to pay their respects and to share that connection with Juanita. Juanita, of course, was a true partner, true partner, 50 years of marriage to Bob. Always kind, always sensitive, always polite to everyone, always listened to everyone. Actually, the two of them were like that, and so they had such a wonderful partnership. Later on, I asked Bobby to run for mayor again a few years ago, called him and tried to persuade him. "Bob, you should be running for mayor." And he said, "No, I have grandchildren." And then he talked to me about how much he wanted to spend his time with his grandchildren. And I think of that, about how much his wife, his three children, Jennifer, Rachel, and young Bob, two of whom are part of the Revere Public Schools now, how much they probably sacrificed because that was time that he didn't get to spend with them. And, and they knew, they knew how much he loved them. You could see it on his face the minute he saw one of them come in. I think he has a wonderful legacy. The first that I personally watched him do was that he almost singularly was responsible for saving that historic building at 108 Beach Street to be given, to rent to the Revere Society for Cultural and Historic Preservation. But he didn't stop there, you know? As people said, Bobby showed up. Not only did he save the building, did he oversee it, did he help them take care of the building, did he, no matter how difficult it was for them, because they were all amateurs trying to get right grants, trying to do things, he helped them. And he and Juanita came to the meetings and they would give both, and always gave financial support and moral support to the society. Because he really could see the importance of keeping the legacy of Revere and, and of Revere Beach and passing it on to the next generation. And speaking of the next generation, in 1999, I went up to City Hall and we had a long talk about the legacy of the Revere Public Schools. And he signed the project that we had submitted to the Department of Education to build the five new schools. I didn't know then that he would come back as a city councillor and then help us move on. And at every step of the way, Bobby was there trying to help us. I, I think, maybe you didn't see it, or maybe some of you did, there was a sign at the Banana Bowl, a place that I frequent. There was a sign up, they have a high-rise sign, and it said, "We miss you, Bob Haas." And I thought, wow, that's it. That said it all. And I went in and asked them about why did they put it up? And a few of the people who worked there, somebody said, "Well, he was a man." Other people, other people said, "He showed up. He came. He wished us good luck. He came to our anniversary." And everywhere I talked to everybody throughout the city, that's what people said. Bobby was quiet, but he was there. And I think we owe a great debt of gratitude to him, to his family, to a couple of generations of his family who instilled in him that sense of service, and we've been the beneficiary of it. And we'll miss you, Bob Haas. We'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thai. Any other members? Ms. Feranti.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. When I started to run for politics for the election of 2000, and he was the mayor at the time, and I was having a fundraiser, and I went to see him to invite him to my fundraiser. At that time, I was a nobody. I was just running for the first time.
No.
Hasn't changed. Hasn't changed. That, you know, I went to talk to him to invite him to the fundraiser, and he said, "Michael, unfortunately, I can't make it, but I wish you, you know, all the luck." And he gave me a few tips of what to do, because I really didn't know what to do. And I really appreciated that, so, you know, he was very generous, you know, very complimentary that way. We're both members of the Knights, and every time we'd ever meet, he would compare notes. You know, he was on the city council, I was on the school committee, and he'd always ask, you know, because his daughter's at the Lincoln School, my wife, you know, "How's the school doing?" And, you know, I would tell him what I knew. And, you know, he says, "We're going to get the air conditioning done." I said, "I hope so, but unfortunately, that's not in our hands. It's in your hands, being the city council." Always a gentleman. You know, like everybody else in politics, you have disagreements about issues, but, you know, you can't hold grudges because it really doesn't get you anywhere. So we'd talk about it and we'd sort of work out our differences. And there isn't really a lot more we can say. I mean, Ms. Thai put it so eloquently. You know, we had the time from on Sunday, you know, the mayor, you know, Congress and Markey, and, you know, Carroll herself. And there's just unfortunately, nothing you can really say of what hasn't already been said. My heart goes out to his wife, Juanita, his three kids, the grandkids, and I wish them all nothing but the best. And if there's anything we can do, I'm sure be glad to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feranti. Mr. Sinella.
Along with Michael, I, I was part of a happening in Revere when Bobby was first elected to the city council. Revere had a revelation. Five new councillors came on board. It hasn't happened since that time. You had a new Ward Two councillor, Catherine Penn Belafonte, Ward Four, Bobby Cronin, Ward Five, Ken Hill, and Bobby and I were both elected councillors at large. You talk about an incoming freshman class that rewrote the book. In fact, we ended up pulling off the council presidency. We had five votes and Billy Bell was on the council then, and he gave the, the sixth vote. So Bobby, all the way up and down the line, was, he was there, concerned about people's health, concerned about the well-being of, of the city. My wife was going through a period of time and we were sitting in one of the pagodas My wife is going through a period of time, and we were sitting in one of the pagodas, and through the corner of my eye, I thought saw Bobby and Anita drive by, and sure enough, they went up Ocean Avenue, came all the way back down, and pulled over to address, you know, Grace's health and all that. So going to the bagel bin took a priority, but not with us sitting there. And that just speaks Bobby. He just, when they say he was there, and it wasn't for show, he wanted to be there. It was a part of his makeup. It was, and you sensed it when you were there. He made you feel a participant. He just reached out with, it's unique. It's a gift, and he shared it with everybody, and we were fortunate that it was as long as it was and that he did come back after being mayor, and pride is there, and he loved Revere, and it showed. And I, for one, am grateful to him, and I, again, people, as Carol said, I mean, two hours, two and a half hours in line, I mean, it was hot. It was hot. But again, people were there because they wanted to be. No one's taking pictures, no one's talking, "Oh, you know, I was there." No, no, no. This was a personal feeling and well-received, and we're grateful to him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sonella. Mrs. Rizzo.
Well, I wish I had the history that Mr. Sonella and Ms. Ty had with Mr. Haas, Bob, but I am so appreciative of the years that he gave to the city, not to just be a politician, but he gave it because he loved the city. I'm so appreciative of how much the family gave up for him to do what he loved doing. But what I have to say I admire the most about Bob is him as a husband, him as a father, and definitely him as a grandfather. When I watch him and Juanita, I keep saying, "Oh, I hope my husband and I like that in fifty years." It's not going to happen, but I hope I raise my kids as well as Juanita and Bob did, and I can't wait to have grandchildren to do the things that I saw Juanita and Bob do for their grandchildren. Bob would show up to school events, and a lot of times in this world, people show up as politicians, elected officials, whatever you want to call them. Bob came in to these events and took everything in and loved being there, whether it was the Lincoln School cultural performance they had towards the end of the school year, they also had Lincoln School concert. But then he was really excited about the Lincoln School Playground. He couldn't wait for the Lincoln School Playground. And he wasn't really, he had a really bad cold the weekend that we were doing the Playground, but he still showed up, still helped out, and watching his face the day that we cut the ribbon was like the best part. I didn't even watch the children. I watched Bob because his face looked like the hundreds of children that were there. He was just so excited. So I hope I am as good of a parent and grandparent as he was, and again, truly, truly going to be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Ms. Gravelisi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I probably have worked with Bob the shortest of all since I've only been here for a few years, but I just remember Bob more of a community man, a family man with his grandchildren. He and Juanita were at the karate school every week, bringing the children in for their classes, all the events that we've gone to, and I feel more of just like knowing him through his history, maybe like you had Brian, like knowing him when you were younger with your dad. The one story, you know, every election year, all my dad said to me is, "I don't care who you vote for, just vote for Bob Haas," every single year. So that just, again, being in the community our whole lives and just knowing his commitment to all of us and everything went on, you know, he is so sadly missed, and we're all going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravelisi. At this time, if we could just rise for a moment of silence. With that, the next scheduled meeting of the Revere School Committee will be August 15th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?